It is six thirty PM and we will begin this committee of the whole on April the seventh. First item of business is adoption of the agenda and the motion comes forward from councillor Maybe and seconded by deputy mayor Fode. And we ask that the agenda be adopted as amended. So item number seven point six on your agenda. There was clerical error. It should read authority to accept conveyance of a portion of Ganon Oakway Lake Road to township. So it should not read Black Rapids Road. We apologize for that error. So with the motion on the floor that the agenda be adopted as amended, any questions or comments? Not all call a question. All those in favor, all those post and it is carried. Next item is declaration of key interest or general nature thereof. Does anybody have an interest to declare? I have no hands up. So move forward and pass number four, number five. There is no in camera, therefore no reporting out. And we'll move forward with number six, which is delegations and presentations. And we have Gary Patton. The delegation will be uh will be to request a waiver of deposit and notice requirements in the local newspaper for future unopened road allowance closure application. So we'll ask Mr. Patton if I'm saying that correctly to please come forward.
My girlfriend. Yeah, I guess I'll just keep it somewhat casual, I guess, but I've I've sent notes into Michelle regarding my request and I believe you should have copies of them. Is that correct, Michelle?
We do.
Uh, so I'm not sure if you have a chance to read them or not.
Can you please come towards the microphone so that people at home can hear?
Yeah, this is great. I was the the chair for I was a high school teacher and I was a chair for our staff association. So to be in a meeting room again with this sort of uh kind of uh is quite interesting, actually, to be to say the least, you know. But anyway, um, just want to um. I'm not sure if you had a chance to read it or not, but essentially I'm requesting that a uh you waive the fee for the um uh purchase of, or sorry, for the um advertisement of the uh unopened road allowance for my purchase. And the reason for this is that my property abuts both both pieces of land and that um uh essentially I've I've two separate lots, and so I would just be joining one with this untraveled road allowance. I believe that the the fee is about approximately starts at twelve hundred dollars for the deposit and but it could go greater than that. And the objective would be to advertise in the um Brockville this week, which has the greatest distribution for our area. The only issue with that is that, and I've sat on this for fifteen months and not moved forward with it because I've also severed some land and had preapproval from the uh preconsultation. And so I'll be moving forward with that, but I just sat on it because it didn't seem right for me to have to pay this amount for a circulation that doesn't reach me nor my neighbors or nor my area. And I do believe in that 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 form of advertisement is effective for more prevalent areas perhaps, or more areas that are used for hiking or trails or that have public use, but this has zero public use to it in any way. Um, I've in the twenty-five years that I've lived here, I haven't seen anyone on that property other than myself. Uh, so yeah, so I would like to move forward with it. And I've also had a had done a uh had a in in included in this is that a a value assessed at it by a by a a company in Kingston. So I'd like to know if that's an acceptable amount as well. Um, so I guess to to follow up, um, just that um, I'd like to purchase this property. Um, I'm not sure a hundred percent why, but I think it just dovetails nicely with another little piece that I have there. I won't be able to build on this property. The preconsultation report that I received, uh, it was over a year ago now, and I would just like to credit the 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 staff here. And this isn't, I'm not trying to uh have myself here in any way, but it was just fantastic dealing with Kyle Peel, Amanda, even just more recently, Michelle and Marnie, they were really, it made things a lot easier to understand what was required and what wasn't required, even though the idea of roads committee was involved with it. A karaoke conservation story. It was very thorough and it really gave me a good foundation to start on. But I've decided to, once finding out that I could potentially go in this direction, then I'm just making this request now. And I pretty much given up on it up until this point. I believe that perhaps maybe it could be advertised locally in my area, but that's not for me to decide, uh, like with as much the same as a a land severance would be in the immediate area of this of this uh property. You have a map, I think, associated with it. It's a small strip of land. Uh, but yeah, I guess, you know, without having to beat a beat a horse with it, I I think that that's kind of my my case. Do you have any questions specifically about it?
So I'll ask I'll ask council for questions. So I just remind everybody that this is a delegation and uh unfortunately, it's not a debatable motion that's on the floor. So any questions are for clarity for understanding. Please go forward, Deputy Mayor Fode.
Thank you worshiping through you. I'm just gonna add a little bit to Mr. Patent's presentation. At the very bottom of the V of this map he provided, it is solid granite, about twenty-five feet high. That's the reason the road back in the day of our forefathers laid these out. That's why they chose to go around it rather than sledgehammer and old dynamite through it. That whole V is solid rock up to where Mr. Patent and has owned property arrow coming in. That's when the rock face drops off and it's flat land from there to the neighbor's property. So that whole ridge is just a rock solid granite, about twenty-five feet high. Mr. Patent had indicated he's never seen anybody on it. Well, there's a good reason. You better have a good pair of boots and a stick with you. But anyway, I just wanted to add that to it because that doesn't show up here or have a reason to show.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Go ahead. Uh, go ahead, councillor Maybe.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I also have questions before about the paper and putting our our notice in there. And that the paper that is requested in this case doesn't come to our area as much as the inaccurate reporter is actually delivered to our doorways in this area quite a bit. And it is the same company. So I don't know whether it could be in that one instead, if you want people to know about it. Thank you.
Any further uh questions for clarity or better understanding of the delegation? I have none, and I thank you very much. Um, they're the only way that this gets considered uh regarding the policy that currently currently stands would be uh for someone to make a notice of motion at the end of the meeting to speak to uh changing the policy. Um, at this point, there's been no application made at this point for us to reconsider any fees. This is in preemptive fashion. So in order for us to consider this uh on this item or any other future item, it would need to come forward as a notice of motion, which happens at the end of the meeting. Okay. So council has the has the ability to bring forward a notice of motion to reconsider the policy, which includes it lays out clearly the advertising portion uh that's required in the policy, which is why it's required of your application.
Okay, so are you, may I ask? Are you saying that um there isn't an opportunity to waive this fee in this particular case that a full policy needs to be reevaluated prior to?
The only way we the only way we can reconsider the fee is if you paid it and then come forward and the application is made. There's been no application for us to reconsider. So we don't do it in advance of that. Um, so in order for us to reconsider it in advance, we need to look at the whole policy.
Okay, um, yeah, I don't fully understand that. I actually.
It's more procedural. So if we if we were to reconsider this in advance of looking at the policy, then every single person who makes uh an application for this could ask the same thing and we would be inundated with with delegations.
Okay, fair enough.
Realistically, it's much more efficient if we actually look at the policy, whether it makes sense to reevaluate it or.
Could I just grab a piece of paper that I've got over here to read from one of your one of your policies?
Sure.
Is that possible? Policies, sorry. I received three policies, I guess, from from uh sorry, from Michelle. And one of them, in one of them, it, you know, I was just kind of curious. There's a couple of different ones in here, but I guess it was I think they stated it in there, the bylaw number seventy-six dash oh one. It says that prior to the sale of real property, council should give notice to the public of the proposed sale of real property by any one or more of the following methods. So by posting a notice on the real property proposed for sale or by publication in a newspaper and a clerk's opinion uh considered to be sufficient general circulation in the area to provide reasonable notice. So there is in here, it says it is possible to be by posting a notice on the real property for proposed sale.
I'm just going to go to the planner in regards to that policy.
Um, through you, there's uh three different policies that contain information regarding the sale of land, each with different somewhat different, similar, but different notification requirements. They all do require notification in the newspaper, though. So our practice has been in accordance with the policy for the giving of public notice, which is by law sixteen zero zero seven, which is the most recent direction of council, which requires notification for four consecutive weeks and a notification of um circulation. That's oh, for the general area.
Fair enough. So realistically, there's a number of policies and this has actually been an item that precludes your uh your delegation. Um, there's some cleanup work that we need to do with some of these policies to make them more streamlined. So um by having a notice of motion come forward at the end of the meeting, it would be up for discussion at the next meeting, which is council next Monday night. Um, and we can have a discussion about the policy and the director can bring forward a report outlining recommended changes or options that we could uh change to make it more streamlined and more efficient. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, it does say it in the one sixteen dash zero seven, the bylaw. It does say manner of notice, but it doesn't say like, I I guess it doesn't say specifically that they should be, they should be all of these four municipal website, you know, I think in my first a letter that I sent Terry some time ago and a municipal website is another way municipal office um in the in the area and that my particular situation is unique to the use of it, but it also says publish once at least or once at least one month in advance. But it doesn't say that all of these or just one of these or two out of three of these would be acceptable practice based on what the council sees as viable.
So so we as council take recommendation from the staff that are professional planners. However, to your point, you've actually pointed out something that we should look at as far as streamlining the policy, because if it is it doesn't say it shall be or it will be or it may be. There's a difference between all of those languages.
Okay, well, but okay, um, I hope to hear from you at some point soon, but.
We will, we will let you know.
But I would just want in closing, thank you for your time and you guys are great. I'm really proud to live in my township and so on. And I I know Karina, you've been doing an amazing job. Uh, not unlike the rest of you, but uh but thanks for everything you've been doing.
Flattery was not part of the delegation, but we'll take it this evening. Thank you. Thank you. Take your shot while you have it, right? So. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Um, I'm going to recognize the clerk to speak in regards to item number seven point five, which is the enforcement policy new trailer, clean municipality bylaws and so on and so forth. So there was some clarity questions that were asked at the beginning. So before we get too far down into staff reports, just going to recognize the clerk to speak to this recommendation.
Thank you through your worship. Um, so you'll notice over the course of committee of the whole and council meetings moving forward, um, a little bit of a procedural change. Um, it's it's going to be that uh policies and certain items will come forward through council with their own specific recommendation and their own specific bylaw. Um, in the past, I've noticed that um recommendations were made for specific policies or and then they were confirmed by bylaw. Um, that makes it tricky for staff to uh repeal or amend those specific bylaws because they are a confirmatory bylaw and a catchall. So I just wanted to to recognize that. Um, there were several recommendations in Marnie's uh um reports. So we've broken them all out so that they can be um addressed individually instead of all lumped into one.
So this is a direct uh response to the comments that Mr. Gurrell had made. Uh, councillor Gurrell had talked about as well as councillor Lackey regarding how we have done things in the past and uh not to put any pressure on our clerk who's working very diligently. There is some holes in our bylaws in that there's some that are layered on top of each other, some that weren't repealed. Some were recommendations rather than bylaws, which makes it hard to find and look up. So we are going to endeavor to clean up those issues where um there's duplication or overlapping, if you will. And also going forward to streamline things to be more appropriate in bylaws, which makes them searchable and makes them easier for individuals to find. Um, and that way, so when we go to do our council meetings, it there will be a longer list of bylaws just because they will be coming through as bylaws rather than confirmatory confirmatory bylaw, basically confirming all the recommendations as it was done previously. Did I get that right?
You got it.
There you go. So um Michelle and the rest of the staff have been working to identify, I believe. We just saw the result of one where there's numerous policies that have been layered and used in conjunction and it's fine until it's not abundantly clear and then we've got to make a change. So anyways, wanted to have that conversation before we go forward. So with that, we'll go to some point one indigenous peoples relations consultation and communication policy and land acknowledgement. So the motion comes forward from uh councillor Antoine Hartley. Seconded by councillor Maybe that the committee of the whole recommend that council approve bylaw number twenty twenty-five dash zero one seven being the township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands Indigenous Peoples' Relations Consultation and Communication Policy attached as exhibit A to administration report twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight. And that the committee of the whole recommend that council approve the bylaw twenty twenty-five dash zero one eight being the township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands Land Acknowledgement attached as exhibit B to administration report twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight. Okay, got it on the floor. So um discussion on this motion. Um, and the CIO will answer any questions. Go ahead, uh councillor Kellman.
Thank you, your worship and through you. I had a couple of questions. Uh, one was under item three point four in the policy regarding the installation of permanent land acknowledgements on township assets. I just wonder if you could clarify what that means, because when we think of a land acknowledgement, we think of what we say at the start of a meeting. So I'm just wondering what it means to install a permanent land acknowledgement on a specific asset.
That's three point four.
Yeah.
Uh, page eighteen of the policy.
Uh, thank you worship through you. Um, so if the township wished to um recognize uh indigenous peoples' lands with respect to a particular in uh facility or location, a park or something like that, um, it would just this this part of the policy would enable us to or give some guidance on the consultation that would go that would be appropriate for that. It wouldn't necessarily be a replication of the land acknowledgement. It would be something tailored that would be fitting for the area for the the use of the if it's in a park versus at a fire hall, for example, or a municipal building.
Okay, thank you. And my second question was more broad, more general about implementation. When I was reading section four, uh, four point one, when we're talking about having to contact provincial ministry of indigenous affairs and First Nations economic reconciliation, I'm just wondering. And I'm not doubting, but I just I just wonder about how practical this sort of process will be in terms of a timeline. And I know, you know, we're probably planning things well in advance if we have to involve um this this protocol. And I just want to make sure. It sounds like there's a lot of moving parts that will need to be involved if this comes into play. And I just want to know how practical that will be for staff in terms of timelines.
Through you. It's not going to be a quick process for sure. Um, one of the things um in my research on all of this, um, was that on the consultation particularly uh is particularly uh relevant where there could be an impact on uh treaty rights. So so as soon as you start start talking about stuff like that, that's not to diminish things, but that's at a higher pay grade than we are. Um, so that would necessarily involve provincial and perhaps even federal governments. If there was something, a development that was going to uh impinge upon some treaty rights or constitutional rights of an indigenous group. So so um as soon as you start talking intergovernment consultations, it does push your timelines out. We just need to be cognizant and build that into what we're doing. Um, but it is where only where there is uh a need for the consultation.
So it wouldn't be in regards to just for my own edification and clarification. So for example, with the new fire hall bill, it wouldn't necessarily apply to that. It would be to do a general scan to see if there's any um outstanding issues or not issues, um, known historical property in that area or something like that. I just I'm looking from a planning perspective. Go ahead.
It's more of a capital planning process process in terms of if there's an ECA required. So for example, um, a significant roadwork project um where there may be areas of archaeological potential and a provincial EA is required. Then archaeological assessment would be part of that as well. Through that archaeological assessment, the consultant would determine if there are indeed considerations and consultation required, depending on the outcome, the nature of the area and their expertise in determining that. So it would be something that in the planning of the timeline and the work plan for capital projects needs to be considered. So it would be a component that's built into RFPs.
So it would be identified through things like an EA, whether or not this would have to go to that level.
It would be a component of the EA.
Yeah, right. Okay. So great question. Thank you for that, because I hadn't thought about that. Any other questions? I have councillor Antoine Hartley and then deputy mayor Fode.
Mine has to, my question is, it's first of all, I'm I'm very happy we're doing this. Has to do with the land acknowledgement itself. Um, and I there's a little bit of it that I I've I've wonder if we can do some massaging a little bit in the wording, in particular, um, to recognize the role the township must play in truth and reconciliation. I'm just.
I'm just trying to find the the page. There it is. Okay, I'm sorry.
So the whole point of truth and reconciliation is acknowledging um the past. And what are we and and what are we going to do about it in the future, basically? The reconciliation part is the building of of relationships um and and listening, uh, et cetera. So I'm wondering if we can massage that a little bit to make, because with it to the to recognize the role the township must play, must play, kind of makes me, it 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 doesn't, I don't don't think it conveys what we really want to say.
Mr. CIO, can you speak to how this came to be and how it was?
Yes, I can. Um, so as as mentioned in the report, in twenty twenty-four uh for the twenty twenty-four uh budget, council approved uh uh an amount of funds for us to retain a consultant to assist us with this, recognizing that this is a hugely complicated undertaking. Um, and and looking at the 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 um indigenous peoples listed in the land acknowledgement, um, understanding who who whose territory is, who's within our township, it was a was um fairly involved process. Um, this was developed, uh, the 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 um consultant uh had First Nations uh people on their consulting team and also did some consulting with First Nation groups on the land acknowledgement and on the policy. Uh, and they came up with this. In my reading of the um calls to action from the Truth and Reconciliation uh Commission, it uses very strong language throughout. Governments must do this. Governments have to do this. Governments have to adopt the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples or Aboriginal Peoples. Um, and so I think the 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 role for truth and reconciliation that the township plays, it's not that we must, it's incumbent upon all of us to be part of it. And I, you know, I'm the first one to play with words. But I felt that the must in this case, I I I considered it, you raised this with me last week, and I considered this for quite a bit. And I like the fact that we must be involved in this. We can't sit on the sidelines. We must be. So that's where that's coming from. I take your your comments that that's what it is. And if council wishes me to go and try to come up with some wording um on this, I'm I've I've also been trying to come up with something that would still convey the the role we have to play, but avoid the word must. Um, and soon as you start talking, you know, the the council will or can play, it it sort of waters it down a little bit, I feel. Anyway.
Follow up.
Yeah, I guess I just was looking at it differently as the must being, we must do this for truth and reconciliation. It's the right thing to do. Do you know what? So that's that's how I was reading it. So so but I I hear your point.
Questionably, it it is the right thing to do.
Yeah.
Um, but also the through the truth and reconciliation, there is so much of it, the theme of of recognizing we have to recognize that we we aren't the original people of this land, you know, we aren't the original stewards of this land. And so we we must recognize the the that the role and the place of of indigenous peoples in Canada. And so that that's the side that I took. Now, I had the benefit of having lots of conversations with the consultants who explained this to me. Um, so so I I I get where you got the opposite reading.
Thank you so much.
They're explaining that. Deputy Mayor Fode, go ahead.
Thank you worshiping through you. I too have a problem with the wording, but my first question will be has this came from the federal government down or did it come from the United Nations to the various governments?
Um, it's, that's a really big question. In two thousand and six, the United Nations passed the UN Declaration on the Rights of Aboriginal People, and I apologize, I may not have the title exactly right. But um, as everyone's well aware, the 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 residential school issue has been around for a lot longer. Um, and you know, culminating in the um the Truth and Reconciliation Commission and the the work that they did, and I think they came out with three million pages of uh documents published on this and there, I think there's eighty-six calls to action uh impacting various levels of government. Most of it is federal uh for sure, because um Aboriginal people or indigenous people in Canada fall within the jurisdiction of the federal government. But that's not to say that the provinces and municipal governments don't have a role in truth and reconciliation, and they were included in the calls to action. The federal government in, I want to say twenty fifteen or twenty seventeen. No, sorry. It 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 so the the twenty fifteen, the Truth and Reconciliation um Commission released their call to action and I was in error with eighty-six, there's ninety-four calls to action. In twenty twenty-one, the federal government um passed the um UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples Act, which confirmed and one of the calls to action was that we must recognize and abide by the UN Declaration. So it all kind of dovetails together under the auspices of the federal government. Um, the provinces have a role to play as well. Uh, and and as I said, municipal government. So it's it really is, it's a municipal, it's a federal led thing, but it really percolates all over.
There I might, if I can add something here. Uh, there's a paper by AMO that was done in April twenty nineteen, which I can send out to the rest of council. It it speaks to the levels of government. It is more the federal and provincial governments um responsibility to consult. However, our funding, a lot of our funding comes from both of those agencies, therefore we are required to be. Therefore, we are required to be part of the process and part of our, um. If we have this policy in place, then we can ensure that if we are faced with certain situations whereby NEA identifies that there's uh indigenous sensitive areas that we call in the right people and we have a policy already in place. But I will send this out in regards to municipal governments and the Crown's duty to consult. Okay? Go ahead.
I will follow through after Marnie.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Marnie.
So I was just gonna add to that, and I think it's in the staff report, but um in twenty twenty-four, in the new provincial planning statement that was released, um, the provincial government also acknowledged that um early and meaningful consultation with the indigenous communities shall be considered um in the planning processes as well, which is the broader capital planning as well as Planning Act applications. So um it's been identified as a provincial priority.
So to carry on. So there's no cut and dried, it's been approved by the federal government in Canada. Yes or no?
Um, yes, it has been approved. The, by adopting, by, by passing legislation, um, the federal government has uh accepted the UN Declaration. And it has mapped up a framework to how to implement the uh Truth and Reconciliation's Commission, Truth and Reconciliation Commission's calls to action.
And the province of Ontario has done the same.
I believe it has, yeah.
I believe it has based on conferences we attend.
And, and the changes that are coming through in the legislation through the provincial policy statement, the Planning Act and all that sort of thing.
I too, like my colleague, have some questions about the wording, the we must and we do this and we do that. Sitting at home the other night, I'm thinking, is Russia gonna do that someday? We must acknowledge this land that we're using belonged to Ukraine. I highly doubt it. You know, where I know we're only talking about us here, but when wars are fought, there's no winners. But when it's all said and done, you have this, they have that. To acknowledge much later on that this land, it belongs to someone else. When in fact, there was bloodshed that said that it's been turned over. I know I muddy the waters deeply here, but I intend to. I just find some of this wording is very heavy-handed and meant to control. And when it comes from the federal government to the provincial government, and then they throw it at us and say, here you go, you deal with it. Because it'll be seldom that it comes from this level back up the negativity. It never does. We're the people with their boots on the ground, talking to residents. It's already been stated that there's no identifiable lands within our jurisdiction. Maybe not identifiable, but I know my colleagues have heard me say this before. I can walk you out tomorrow morning to one that was in this jurisdiction. I can show you where that is, and there would be artifacts found without a doubt. But I'm not gonna stop this from proceeding. My bigger fear is, has been mentioned by councillor Kelman. What's it gonna cost this township in time and effort, whereas creating our bylaws such that whoever makes an application pays for all the staff time, one way or another? How much is this gonna cost applicants from here on in? Are they just gonna throw their hands up in despair and say, don't worry about it?
I'll, I'll recognize the director of planning.
Thank you. Um, I can't speak to some of the broader processes, but I can speak to individual planning applications. And I, um, we have had a few that have come through with considerations where an archaeological assessment has been required. And there's many cases where the archaeological assessment is required and there is no indigenous artifacts found, but where there is, it, it requires a process. And um, I, it, it takes time, but the projects are still getting through in a reasonable amount of time. Um, there's been effort put forward in terms of making sure that that um consultation happens in a fairly timely manner. But again, that's something that's not entirely within our control. But when it's coming forward as it relates to a planning application, it's the archaeologist for the applicant that is doing that work. It's not staff that are doing that work, and it's the ministry that's accepting those reports.
Okay. I've seen firsthand what happened south of the railway track here on our potential development lands. Uh, when they first acquired that land, they had it all plowed under. In other words, they tipped it upside down. Four men, I think one day there was five. They walked shoulder to shoulder for days there, back and forth on a grid pattern, looking for artifacts or some sign of. Um, I don't know if they ever found anything, uh, that wasn't for me to answer or them to answer to me. But I was speaking to them one day. I assumed that's what they were doing, and of course, it was what they were doing. But as long as we're not gonna end up by approving this, we're like, you don't have a lot of choice, the way the governments hand things down. But, but as I said, my biggest fear is that we end up with prolonging applications to the point of exasperation. Thank you.
Other hands, questions, comments? Go ahead, councillor maybe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of my questions have kind of been answered. Uh, one is, uh, are there any known lands of, um, of interest? And there isn't, but there is. So it's kind of a split there, whether they get developed in the, in the future. And are there any projects that don't need approval? It's almost sounding like we need to have some sort of investigation before we get too far down the road. Uh, but most often, it'll be turned down or turned over that there's nothing of significance there. But having said that, I also look after a hundred, a hundred acre plot that has two significant areas on it and has been extensively uh dug for archaeological uh findings. And yeah, there still could be something there. So it, it does need to be addressed and brought up and, and looked at. And I also thought that the oh, gone right in my head, sorry.
The wording?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, is a little lengthy. Um, as you all know, I do say one that's a lot shorter than this. And yeah, there's a certain, certain indigenous people that are here on this list that are part of, of that one also. Um, but it was deemed that that could be much shorter, but still be in place and make the same reference as this one would do. So.
Any further comments or questions? Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you, and through you, uh, your worship. It appears to me, and I read this, I was presented with this at the uh, uh Heritage Committee in January. And I found it overly prescriptive. But I appreciate council's problem in a sense is this, that on one hand, you have the universal morality of reconciliation. Then you're faced with economic reconciliation. And then you're faced with the legal ethical issues. And we're all kind of kumbaya when it comes to the moral, the universal morality of reconciliation. What we're having a little trouble with here tonight is we are a, um, excuse me, we're underneath the county, we're a lower tier government. And we're being so prescriptive here. And I was frankly just flabbergasted when I first read this. Then I went back, and this is a little bit of a defense to this nonsense, or to this. I read a statement in a letter regarding our water over here from the Ministry of Environment. And in big old letters, in that letter, it said, and, and I'm paraphrasing. And you will be designated from the province to uh ensure that uh you have done the appropriate um consultations. It was just this rubber bang stamp that was getting rammed down our throats from a provincial government once again. We are a small township. There are going to be costs here. We know that there has been fraud at the federal level. How do we prevent fraud from occurring if we are out there suggesting that we have to go to each or we have to go to indigenous groups for con, for consultation on contracting? Who the heck are we to be doing that? They can't even do it at the federal level, for Pete's sake. Um, the prescription here is for the legal issues. Let's not mix it up, the universal morality of it all. They are different issues. So what does that allow us to do? You can trim. We could trim this. We could get rid of a lot of the legality and be very comfortable that we're doing our job in the moralistic sense of reconciliation. But as a tiny, in the big scheme of things, does the county have something like this? Do the other nine municipalities in eastern of the county have something like this? Or are we supposed to be the poster boy for eleven, thirteen pages of implementation, which requires, we don't even know, we haven't even put our foot in the water yet. This is just the legal structure that we are assuming we are going to do. I am not thrilled with it. I don't know exactly which way to turn on this. This council, I understand, it's sort of way above our pay grade. And I'm happy that people have spoken out, because I was afraid everyone would not speak for fear of being uh viewed badly. But I am a settler, and I suppose I am a settler colonist, and I would like to see a statue of Sir Johnny McDonald out there, as would of Gord Olkey, who fought in wars and was a major in our military. Where's that? Now I'm just editorializing, so I'm gonna pass here on this. And I hope that we can, um, I do have a couple of questions, by the way, more directly. One, who actually wrote this? Was it Arcadus? And B, second question, is what exactly does training require uh for staff? Like, are we inculcating staff with our moralistic view, which would be wrong? Every individual has their rights to their moral views. Or are we telling them that, uh, listen, when you do a contract, you gotta make sure that we're uh including the indigenous list or whatever? Or if you find an arrowhead, be careful. You know, there are some things here. What, what is education for the staff? What does that mean? Training, it says. The word is training. So what is that?
So your question, sorry, your question is.
Who wrote this document for thirty-nine thousand dollars? And what involved training? Because it should not involve moralistic direction. Thank you.
Thank you, worship through you. It was Arcadus in consultation with me. I got to review every draft of it and provide comments to. Um. You, you commented, if I may divert just a little bit, on the prescriptiveness of this. Um, I'd like to remind you that uh the Chair of the Municipal Heritage Committee, Marcus Laterno, who works in this field, his comment about this was, he's worked with a lot of these types of policies, and this is actually a fairly friendly one. So you may have to have a different, a discussion with Marcus about just how prescriptive this is. The training is on, as per the um Truth and Reconciliation Call to Action. It recommends that municipal governments conduct training on um what happened through the residential school. So that people understand what First Nations kids went through. Um, so we actually got to spend two sessions with uh First Nations person, Shane Mustus, who came and uh he did a morning session and an afternoon session with staff. And he went through and talked about his culture and what it was like growing up and that he had aunts and uncles who were taken away to residential schools. At one point, he showed us a video about um, um, First Nations people going back to where they went to school. And afterwards, uh, after the video ended, uh Shane looked at us all and said, uh, anybody wanna talk about this? And I couldn't trust myself to talk, because it was such a moving video. And what these kids endured. Um, I don't think that that's a bad thing for anybody to experience, to, to see that video, not to experience residential school, but to see that and see what people have gone through. The last residential school was, was closed in nineteen ninety-six. This wasn't a war that was fought two hundred years ago. Nineteen ninety-six, I remember nineteen ninety-six. So for, for, for indigenous communities, this happened yesterday to them. There are people that are still dealing with the trauma. So, you know, could we lighten this up? Could we cut it down to one page so it's absolutely meaningless? And it, what consultation means is whatever we decided to mean on a given day. Before this document, we didn't know how to conduct a consultation. We didn't even know who to talk to. This gives us a framework of what we need to do when we come up with a, 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 a situation that we need to consult with this. This isn't, this isn't about Sir Johnny McDonald or who's a settler and who's not and all that. This is just a simple step, and it's a baby step, granted. But it is a simple step for us to ensure that we comply with what we have to do legally anyway. If council's will is to chuck this out the window, fine and dandy. We'll figure something else out. We'll probably use this in some form anyway, because we need some guidance on how we need to do these consultations. And this is, as I explained at the Municipal Heritage Committee, this is a living document. As we get experience with this, this is gonna change and it's gonna grow, and we're gonna get better. But we need somewhere to start, and this is it.
So the other question, councillor Gurrell, um, you had in regards to other municipalities in Leeds and Granville. Um, I know that North Granville has been working on their framework for, since twenty twenty-three. They have a number of different, um, different mechanisms they're using. Uh, they have a indigenous circle that's meeting on a regular basis to talk about policy. Um, and I believe that they are hoping by the end of twenty twenty-five that they have theirs in place. Um, I know that the Village of Westport also speaks to consultation with indigenous individuals uh in regards to planning applications, specifically in the um official plan, which I also believe we have in our official, official plan. Um, but you had asked about that, and I don't know the answer for certain, other than I, I know that North Granville was working on theirs. Um, and I can get more data on that and for next week. Sorry. And you had follow-up, councillor?
The issue of, um, if we had to, or if we were, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? If we were making sure that we were consulting with potential contractors on work and, and they're supposed to have an indigenous um uh component, how do we know that that's legitimate? We don't have the resources to do that in terms of, in terms of, uh, um, someone claiming indigenous uh identity. Um, I know that's a huge question, but we're a tiny drop in the bucket here. How do we go about that? Is there a register?
The, the, oh, sorry, you go ahead then.
Um, that's a great question. I'm glad you asked it. Um, there is an Association of Ontario Chiefs that are um putting together a business directory of indigenous-owned businesses that they will maintain. Uh, I believe they were scheduled to launch in March. I haven't circled back to check if it actually has, but it, I did come across that, that, that resource is out there. I also believe that um the uh provincial government also has some assistance on that as well.
I had councillor Kelman with her hand up.
Thank you, your worship ends for you. I just wanted to add, I have interacted with indigenous people in our community many times over the years through functions at the school, functions with my church, functions at, with the community garden in Lindhurst last year. So they are active members of our community. It is, I find it very difficult to evaluate anything to do with indigenous persons when it comes to policy, because you wouldn't get agreement amongst indigenous persons on whether this is an appropriate policy. If you spoke to everyone in our community that is identified as indigenous, they wouldn't all agree. But I think this is a reflection of the time that we are living in, that we, that we need to have this. And I think the CIO made the most important point. Our staff need some kind of direction, because it is in the Planning Act and they have to deal with this. And we have paid a consultant, we hired the consultant, we approved the consultant. This is what the consultant has given, given us. I'm certainly not one to say that the consultant does not know what they're talking about. And I think it is, we have to remember, it is a living document. So it is new, it is a new time that we are living in. And so there may be some hiccups, there may be some expenses that we weren't expecting. But we have to start somewhere and we have to have something. And I think this is what we have. And it might not be perfect and we might have to change it next year or in five years. Or, and in a hundred years, we might not need it anymore. But for right now, we need something. And I think this has been very well researched over a lot of time. And we have to have something. So I think we all need to remember that.
Thank you, Councillor Kelman. I have Deputy Mayor Foddy.
Thank you, thank you, worship and through you. Your comment a few minutes ago about various North Grenville, Westport. So we'd understand there's gonna be an individual, one of these for each municipality?
I believe that is-
Is that not just enough confusion on its own? That the United Counties couldn't, on our behalf, say, we've come up with this one that appears to cover all? Because it comes back to Councillor Gurrell and my own thoughts and Councillor Hartley's comments. I mean, you get people coming in here and we've got one that's so tight that they're kinda like, well, if we jump over here, we can do this. I don't know, Councillor Kelman's comments that, that, and it's true, the staff have done a lot of work and I appreciate everything that's here. I just don't agree with everything that's there. But now that I find out that every municipality across Ontario, we're gonna have four hundred and forty-four possible variations of this?
You, you must also recognize that not each place, uh, sorry, I'm not speaking very clearly. Each place in the province, different groups of indigenous folks, it was different, different. Um, I'm, I'm not very well trained on this, so I don't wanna misspeak and offend anybody. But the, there are different communities, um, like the land acknowledgement statement from the county is very different than what I'm, it's Hodinashoni, um, like, um, Hodinashoni, Anishnabe and, uh, but like, our statement is different because the research that was done in regards to our area, which I, I think is part of the whole purpose of going through this truth and reconciliation for us even at this lowest level of government. Lowest and most important because we're the ones that actually deal with the people every single day. So while I can appreciate that there's some frustration in regards to wording and how this may be prescriptive, I think to the point that was made by Councillor Kelman, without, in the absence of a policy for staff to refer to, to ensure that we are not misstepping in different, in very different times. We have to recognize that, based on your comments, Deputy Mayor Foddy, you know, blood was shed. And not wrongly, um, in that the fact that if we were on the receiving side of that, I think it would be, we'd be having the same conversation, it'd just be too different. It would be a different policy. However, in order to honor those who came before us in our own municipality, I think it is imperative that we make strides, efforts to change behaviors and be better at acknowledging these horrific tragedies and the wiping out of communities and wiping out their heritage. So my understanding of this policy is that if, if there is a way, and I don't want to trivialize this, there is a way that we can preserve an arrowhead or a settlement, to your point, the one that exists that hasn't necessarily been identified. It's our responsibility to that culture and those people who were made to move on because we said so. Or God forbid, having families broken up and taken away because we said so. So, um, you know, to the other points that have been made in regards to morality and ethical obligations, it is our obligation as elected officials to honor all those residents, current, regardless of how they identify and as Caucasian, indigenous, otherwise, that we're trying to wrap our arms around as many of those individuals and respect those cultures that exist within our communities. We don't always have to agree to the point that Councillor Kelman made, that even in the indigenous community, they may not all agree at this. But we have to start somewhere with giving the framework to the staff to make sure that we are doing everything we can and get better at it as time goes on. Because in the past, it's been very apparent that we have been totally oblivious to this. And that is what was identified in two thousand and six, two thousand and six. So if you think about it, it's, it's been almost twenty years. So I would say that time is due. Deputy Mayor Foddy, go ahead.
Just a final comment. I will approve this in the light that we as council can change it any day we please. It's a policy. And it's a living document, as has been stated. Your comment a minute ago and, and just shed a different light, um, you know, wiping out the past. As Councillor Gurrell had stated, with the woke ideology that wiped out Sir Johnny McDonald and a number of other prominent citizens, nobody was perfect back then. God forbid they don't do that as members of council fifty, seventy-five years from now with us because that person voted this way. I mean, the federal and provincial police forces stood absolutely uselessly by and watched all these woke ideologists do as they pleased and did absolutely nothing. And as stated by Councillor Gurrell again, anybody here that didn't talk to Brock, or sorry, to Gord Olkey after that, you wouldn't have wanted to talk to him for the first couple of weeks after. He couldn't unclench his jaws. But he was one of three people who stood steadfast in front of a number of people mocking him and did everything but touch him. And as Gord told me afterward, you touch me and that will be a step you wished you hadn't have taken. And that was the only feedback he gave to one of the people taunting him. He says, you don't touch me, you'll be all right. So, okay, so we, we can vote in favor of this, or at least I will. Not that I'm in favor of all of it, but because it's a living document, we can tweak it. But I do know and I have spoke to really nice people who live right here in this village, who are indigenous, had a great chat with them. I sat and ate with them after the, uh, the Remembrance Day service last fall. So, you know, I can relate. I remember as a young child, the lone survivor of that encampment I'm referring to. I can envision him and where his teepee was. They moved it out to the road, I think I mentioned that earlier, so the people in our neighborhood could keep an eye on him. He was an elderly man. And they brought him milk cans full of fresh water weekly, just to make sure that he was as well as he could be. Anyway, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Councillor Lackey.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to, I guess, the Director. You know, I can see where we're all going with this and it is, will be a living, breathing document. But what would be the repercussions if we sat on this and we learned? Now that we've made it this far, rather than etch that stone already and then have to etch it later because we all know things don't come back to get rectified at this council table unless it's some sort of catastrophe, it just doesn't work that way. It comes back when we identify, you know, there's a huge problem after it's happened. So what would be, what would be wrong with taking a step back and saying, okay, we acknowledge, we're gonna have an acknowledgement, we're gonna say, thank you for the love that you provided us. And we move on and wait and see how the rest of Canada adopts this. Rather than us, as I say, etching the stone.
So what you're-
Hoping that it might get refined later on.
So your ask is that the second part of the motion stand, but not the first part? Because you just, you just identified that you were okay with the land acknowledgement, but that if we leave, left the policy out? Is that what you're asking? Okay, so I, in order, there would need to be an amendment to the motion in order to take it out. Does anybody want to make that amendment? Go ahead.
I don't mind a lot of what Councillor Lackey has just stated, but isn't the whole crux of this, the land acknowledgement?
The land acknowledge-
Isn't that the point of a lot of this? To acknowledge?
The land acknowledgement is just that, it's the acknowledgement that we would read at the beginning of our council meetings. That's just the one forward-facing thing we would do, acknowledging at the beginning of, of our meetings. However, the policy is, is independent of that. Would that be fair? Okay, so it's because the way the motion is, is written is that the committee, the whole, recommend that council approve bylaw, being the township of Thousand Islands, People's Relations Consultation Communication Policy attached as Exhibit A to Administration Report. And that the committee, the whole, recommend that council approve bylaw twenty twenty-five dash zero one eight, being the township Leeds and the Thousand Islands Land Acknowledgement attached as Exhibit B. So essentially, what Councillor Lackey has indicated is that we would be approving Exhibit B, but shelving Exhibit A. So in order to do that, um, would be, it would require an amendment to the motion that's already on the floor. Go ahead, Councillor Gurrell.
Thank you, and through you, your worship, and I certainly don't know the answer. Would it be, if we were going to delay or defer, would it be reasonable to defer it until, um, the county had, had an opportunity to, in a more broad sense, look at this, rather than us being the lower-tier government, would it be reasonable to say, what, what did the county, the upper-tier government come up with? It could be the same thing, I don't know. But would it be a reasonable prospect to defer it until county has had a chance to deal with the issue?
So county, I can tell you right now, has no, they have a land acknowledgement and that is it. It is in their official plan to, um, commit to consultation with indigenous folks, but there is no policy associated with that, I do not believe. Is that correct on the planning side? Yeah. So at this point in time, I am unaware of any movement at the county to create a framework within their boundaries. The other, uh, cause I believe at one point in time, there was talk about them sort of helping round this out through counties, cause to be fair, I think we're all feeling our way around here. So I'll go to the Director of Planning.
Just to elaborate a little bit in terms of whether the policy is passed or not passed, we as a planning department still have obligations under the Planning Act, the Provincial Planning Statement, our official plan, as well as the Ontario Heritage Act, when it comes to properties that have archaeological significance to require archaeological assessments. And should there be indigenous potential identified, that consultation is absolutely required and will have to happen. So whether we have a policy or not, it has to happen.
Go ahead, Councillor Kelman.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I understand the Deputy Mayor's frustration with the number of potential policies that there might be in the province. But I think, again, reflective of the time that we're, we're, we're living in, I think these policies are more relevant, the more specific that they are. So I actually think it's incumbent upon the lower-tier municipalities to have them because as the mayor said, different groups, different families lived in different areas and it can be very specific to one municipality. So I think each municipality having its own policy, they may all have similar wording, but they need to be specific to our municipality. And I would be more comfortable having it at our level than at county level, particularly if it's gonna take a lot longer to get anywhere with county. Again, because our staff need it anyway. But I think specificity, specificity at this point is very important when this is a new thing.
Uh, go to the CAO.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Councillor Kelman raises a very good point. One of the things, uh, that I've learned through this process is that, um, there has to be a sincerity about your intentions in doing a, a consultation. Indigenous communities are not looking to just be a ticked box. If the province said, uh, here's your format for, for consultation and it applies to every situation across the province, all four hundred and forty-four municipalities, well, you're dealing with some lands are ceded, some lands are unceded, some lands have different treaties, some lands were purchased, some lands have reservations on them, other lands don't. How are you gonna get one document that's gonna apply equally across all of those different scenarios? I think the, the symbolism, you call it woke or whatever you wanna call it, the symbolism of having our own policy is that we've taken the trouble to try to address the needs of our indigenous people, um, in a meaningful way. So, um, that's it, that's my comment.
Okay. So the motion still stands on the floor as written, um, attaching Exhibit A and Exhibit B. So Exhibit A is the People's, Indigenous People's Relations Consultation Communication Policy. Exhibit B is the land acknowledgement. So unless there's an amendment, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Councillor Gurrell.
I appreciate that we'd like to be moving along tonight with this, but I do have, uh, would ask for some clarity on four point one point one. Some very specific things here. Some fact, it says, some factors to consider when engaging with indigenous groups. And this is under implementation. And it, it's getting very specific here. So as you go through one through nine, my question would be, we as a township are not armed, I don't believe. Who, who would, who would, would we require another consultant? Who, who would be responsible for that? That's a lot of weight to be, if you wanna look at legalistically, that would be, we're asking quite a few things there from our current staff. And so how do we do that? I know it's a living, fluid document, but how do we go about that? Do we constantly pick up the phone to Arcadus? Are we asking, um, that, it, it appears to me that the province starts telling you, we, we apply for, we're, we're, have a project. Then it seems the province says they have the opportunity to pass down the duty to consult. Apparently, in a letter I read from the province. And therefore, if it's passed down to us, who do we get to do that? It's money spent that we have, financially, we don't have, I don't think that we have the resources to do this. I guess that's my simple question. Who, who's gonna be one through nine there? Who's, who's gonna be responsible for that? I, this is the over-prescriptiveness that bothers me. And I'm not arguing with the point, I guess it's the prescriptiveness of it. We just, it seems to me, we don't have the nuts and bolts.
Your question is, how do we execute on all this?
How do we execute on it?
Okay, so I'll go to the CAO.
Thank you. Um, so the preamble for section four says, the following procedures are intended to be concepts and examples. All right, sorry, just, this is just some guidance for us of things we need to consider. It doesn't mean that we have to do each one. Okay, depending on the situation, um, some of this stuff may not be applicable. The consultants, my, my direction to them was, you know, assume we know zero, which is actually true. And, and give us all the aspects that we need to consider here. So, so we aren't going to, you know, oh, we got a consultation, let's pull out the implementation section. Now we gotta go through four point one point one and start ticking off, one, two, three, four. There are things for us to consider as part of the consultation, they're not things that we have to do, unless they're relevant. So, you know, yes, and I can see, it can, there's an awful lot there to unpack. But the thing is, these, these are examples, these are things that we should be, types of things we should be thinking about when we're going into a consultation.
Okay, go ahead, Councillor Mayby.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to Director of Planning. Does this document actually change anything that you have to do presently when you're considering something?
Through you, um, I think it's important to recognize that this is not a planning policy. This is a corporate policy. So for example, uh, if an EA is required for significant roadwork, that EA is required under provincial legislation. A component of the requirement of that EA would be a cultural heritage assessment, which may include archaeology, depending on the area, the works that are proposed. If there is an archaeological assessment done, qualified archaeologists licensed in accordance with the Ontario Heritage Act would be doing that archaeological work. If it's determined through that work that there is need for indigenous outreach- this would form the basis in which who to contact. But so it's going to inform significant capital works with respect to the planning process. When we look at doing an official plan update or something along those lines, we absolutely have to do some outreach and some consultation, and we currently do do that. But this provides us with a better framework in terms of understanding who we should contact for background information and where we need to go. With respect to a private individual's application, as deputy mayor referenced, um, the proposed subdivision within Lansdowne. Archaeology is absolutely a requirement for any plan of subdivision. Um, and a licensed archaeologist by the province has certain standards and guidelines under their code of practice and licensing requirements that include these considerations. So it really, while it does come across as prescriptive, it's a lot of this is already components of other standards and guidelines that exist under other pieces of legislation. So it provides us with a synopsis of what that looks like so that we have a better understanding. And if we are as a municipality retaining consultants to do work for us that could include this, to say, we need to ensure that in accordance with your professional standards and guidelines, as well as our policy, that these objectives are met.
Uh, I also have director Holliday's hand who's online tonight. Go ahead.
Thank you, and that was a great explanation by Marnie. Um, same thing goes for for um infrastructure as well. Where the DEA process is triggered, um, we have an obligation for indigenous consultations, similar to the the PICs that we've held in the villages for some of the capital works that we're doing. We have to have that same sort of consultation. So this does provide the framework for us on on how we will host those consultations, document and communicate with the the various groups.
Thank you. So the motion remains on the floor as it was read, unless I have a hand up for an amendment or a change, I'm going to call a question. I have no hand up, so I will call the question as it was read, unless anybody wants me to read it again. Okay, as read, all those in favor? All those opposed? And it is carried. Next item is municipal heritage committee vacancy. Um, so that comes from deputy mayor Fody, seconded by councillor Maybe, that the committee, the whole recommends that council appoints blank to the municipal heritage committee. So um, we have a vacancy that we need to fill. Uh, madam planner, those meetings are held on Fridays at?
Fridays at one o'clock. There are four meetings a year. The next one is April twenty fifth, I believe. Um. The other two dates I don't have in front of me, but they're, I think they're quarterly.
Quarterly, so four times a year. Would you, is there anybody who wants to put their hand up and volunteer? Oh, that would be lovely, councillor Antoine Hartley. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. So again, um, four meetings a year, uh, Friday, one P M., and the next one is April twenty fifth. So I'm filling in unless there's other hands that are eagerly going up here. I'm going to fill in Nick. Antoine.
Being a history major just kind of falls in.
Now, perfect, perfect. You'll make a great addition to the committee. So um, reading out the uh motion completed, moved by deputy mayor Fody, seconded by councillor Maybe, the committee, the whole recommend that council appoints Monique Antoine Hartley to the municipal heritage committee. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it is carried. So with that, it is quarter to eight. Um, we've been at this for an hour and fifteen uh comfort break, or do you want to push through? Push through? Okay. Oh, you were going to say the break. How about I I try? We'll try a couple more just here. So um, because we also have our H R manager here with us. Moved by councillor Maybe, seconded by councillor Antoine Hartley, that the committee, the whole recommends that council give three readings and final passage to bylaw number twenty twenty five dash zero one zero, being a bylaw to establish a fit for work policy and procedures in the form attached to administration report twenty twenty five dash zero zero seven. Madam H R manager, is there anything that you wanted to um add to this, or do you want me just to take questions? Okay, I'll I'll we'll call for questions. Any questions in regards to this? I think it is fairly straightforward. Go ahead, councillor Maybe.
Uh, thank you, madam mayor. And through you, uh, is there a policy in place that's similar to this, or is it just cleaning up a few housekeeping uh things as we've uh come to? No, even tonight.
Uh, thank you, your worship. And through you, um, no, this is a proactive policy. We currently have a code of conduct for staff. It's just has a very minimal um section to it, and I think this is just to um elevate and a little bit more encompassing of of the of the policy.
Any other questions? Go ahead, deputy mayor Fody.
Thank you, your worship. And through you to H R, um, I forget which of these two I read. It's not really defined that there's an actual penalty course. It's subject to. Am I right on that? Can I ask why? Because and I'll tell you where I'm coming from. In the in my day job, we encounter this very same scenario. And there's a test and there's two different places right in Kingston. And obviously, I'm not going to get into specifics, but three individuals were released from employment. One did go for a test and failed. One was offered the test and and declined because we all knew that there would be a fail, as did that person. And the third person kept skirting the mandatory test prior to employment. When you're employed in transportation industry, you have a set number of days subject to your employer to have this accomplished. And uh, through U S and Canadian transportation laws. And that person kept stalling to the point where the employer said, it's, you either go get the test or we'll have to let you go. And uh, they went and got the test and failed. I don't see any of that in here, and I'm just wondering why it's not cut and dried in the same way.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, uh, it does stay in the policy, you know, disciplinary action, uh, you know, is circumstantial up to and including dismissal. Um, and so it depends on the situation. There's never a clear cut answer to um. Sometimes there may be an existing uh disability that we don't know. And so that has to be treated differently than, let's say, recreational use. And so it's really, it's really hard to kind of say there's an absolute many times. And so I think it depends on the circumstances. It depends on the on the um, you know, the history, there's if there's any pasta disciplinary action on the same nature. It there's a lot of things that you have to look at in these circumstances. So uh, here you'll see in the policy does say up to and including dismissal. And and so uh, I believe the transportation industry is governed by the government of Canada. I think there's a, you know, they have very different rules around instead of Ontario and the municipal and the human rights laws around that. Um, yeah, so I I I know it's a real good answer in a sense, but it is very circumstantial.
I think that the the main reason that this is coming forward is because our code of conduct, as it's written currently, would not give us um, is not as clear and defined as this is. And even though it seems undefined comparative to what you're used to at your place of business, this actually gives clearer direction than what we currently have. Go ahead.
If I may add to that, we are a place of business. We employ people to drive million dollar fire trucks and three quarter million dollar snowplows, to say nothing about all the other lesser valued pieces. Should one person um, get involved in a fatality or a serious injury, who picks up the legal tab? We will. We are the employer. And that's where the line is cut and dried in the transportation industry. If you fail or refuse to test, you're out. And I don't think we should look at it much differently when we're asking the taxpayers, not only to pick up the tab for these fire trucks, snowplows and everything else. We'll also ask them to pick up the legal fee. And I would be adamant that we in somehow encourage our staff to find a way to implement a cut and dried policy.
I'll go to the C.
Um, thank you, your worship. Through you, both policies have a section called consequences of policy violations. And obviously, you know, you put a range in there depending on the severity of the infraction. If someone was impaired and crashed a vehicle, um, you know, that that's that's the chop, right? Um, versus someone who showed up is on a new prescribed medication and is loopy and never had this reaction. Well, you know, you you the thing with absolutes is you have to follow them absolutely. And so, you know, there are, there are going to be extenuating circumstances. It just gives us some flexibility to recognize those rather than saying, you know, zero tolerance. Well, yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent on zero tolerance for for someone who is inebriated or uh, I I it it has to be like that. But there's also, there's also gray area, and we need to operate in that gray area. We need some discretion on that.
If I can add uh through your worship, I don't mind you operating in the gray area. But should the needle hit red at point zero eight, you've now are in the red area. You're out of the gray. And that's where I would, I would define that as a a defined policy to deal with.
Absolutely agree. I I, you know, we all travel our roads, and the last thing we need is uh, somebody in a township vehicle um behaving badly like that. Um, so no, this is, this is, there's a few things that get me. Um, this sort of thing is one of them. Um, so so no, there's, but we also have to recognize there's, there's degrees of stuff. But, you know, if someone is legally impaired, um, it there is different things that need to be done, of course. There's accommodations if it's an addiction issue and all that sort of stuff. These people have human rights too, um, but so does everybody else out on the roads. So it's a balancing act as well.
With the current code of conduct, it is not clear. This will make it much more clear. That's the whole purpose of this coming and having be fit, fit for duty policy procedure. Any other comment or question? I see none, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it is carried. Uh, next one is some point four, driver's license requirements, policies and procedures, uh, moved by deputy mayor Fody, seconded by councillor Maybe. The committee, the whole recommends that council give three readings and final passage by law number twenty twenty five dash zero zero nine, being a bylaw to establish driver's license requirements, policy and procedures in the form attached to administration report twenty twenty five dash zero zero six. Again, in the absence of having a clear policy on this, just more in a general uh part of our code of conduct. Um, this is to become more clear as part of our ongoing policy. Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, um, not specifically about this policy, but stemming from it, I was just curious. I'm not familiar with the requirements for uh the license required to drive one of our snowplows. I just wonder, are, is there regular retesting and medicals required? Do we pay for those? We do. Okay, I was just curious.
I find the checks. I know.
My employer also pays for those, so I appreciate that.
So every year, anybody who has the D Z license, I believe, if that's the correct license, Mr. Holliday, um, I believe it's a D Z license. So they have to have medicals. Um, and that is done based on the prescriptive nature of the licensing. Um, they go for those testings and we cover the cost of that as part of their general duties. However, you know, speaking, looking at this, this policy, because there is no policy like this currently, if someone has a suspended license, they are not obligated to let us know. Under ethical, they should be. However, this policy, this policy is verbatim. So. Correct?
That's correct, and this makes our insurance company a lot happier.
Yes. So deputy mayor.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, that is exactly why the province back whenever worked to have supplying um various police agencies, M T Os. I don't think the M T Os have it yet with with license plate scanning ability for that very reason. You can't tell when you're meeting a car coming at you, that driver's got a suspended license. And with our our merry-go-round of of uh judges and bail, um, we see these people, oh, you're charged, but they'll be back in a car tomorrow. And uh, but it gives, where it does make a difference, it gives the law, in the case of lawyers, you get involved in a fatality with a suspended license, it's a different story then.
Absolutely. So with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it is carried. Next item is seven point five township um uh enforcement policy and all the rest. So there's a number of them. I'm going to read them individually. So moved by councillor Maybe, seconded by deputy mayor Fody, the committee, the whole recommend that council approve by law number twenty twenty five dash eleven. Enforcement policy attached to exhibit H attached to report number planning and development twenty twenty five dash one eighteen. Questions on this motion on this report? Go ahead, councillor Maybe.
Uh, thank you, madam mayor. Uh, one of the things I read in here was the screening officer and hearing officer. And it indicated that the C O will be that person. But later on in the document, I did write down the page, I think, yes, uh, exhibit H nine point four. Not eligible as hearing officer if you're an employee of the township.
Um, good pickup on that. Uh, the hearing officer is an external party, so obviously it would be um our outside, external corporate solicitor um, who would serve as hearing officer. I would be the screening officer. Uh, and that's perfectly fine for me to be in that role. So there's a differentiation there. Okay.
Uh, I'll read through my notes if somebody else wants to.
Okay, so this is uh in regards to enforcement policy uh attached as exhibit A. I have, oh, go ahead, councillor.
I think I'm on the right one. And through you, your worship, uh, looking at the reports and generally, I really appreciate how challenging it is for a bylaw enforcement agency agent in our township. I can't imagine. However, under six point O complaints, uh, just a bit of um tidying up here. On our website, we have report a problem, which lists many, many problems. And then we also have um something called uh just bring it up here. It is called the um customer complaint form. Both are available online. We don't make it explicit as to how to get to the customer complaint form. So my simple question is, um, in when we're dealing with our uh plan here, complaints, when it it, the wording is exactly this, and this is what I found. Uh, online customer service request system. Which do we use? Either or? Is the public being instructed to use either or? Is the follow-up the same? Does it end up in the in the proper place?
Go ahead, director.
Um, through you, it should be through the report a complaint, report a problem page, um, recognizing that we need with following all of this, there's going to be web page updates that are going to be required as well that will reply, provide greater clarity around some of those pieces.
It would be report a problem because there it highlights a number of bylaw infractions, and that'll be updated then. So I could tell a constituent, that's the place to go.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Good catch. Any further comments in regards to enforcement policy as attached as exhibit H? Go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor. And through you, another one that I found is we get um uh to put in a complaint, page two, it says within five days, should it be five working days added as that is listed later on in the document. It's just a.
Which part, which page are you on?
Page two of the receipt of complaint. Is where I seen that.
Is it, do you have a page number on on the package?
Where page two, it said, let me see which one is that? Have to open it up.
Quite in clarity, it's whether it's working days or five days, it's not hard. It I in depending on the context, the only legislated timelines are specifically with respect to the AMP's tickets if they are issued. Um, there's
The rest of it is.
There's typically some leeway as we're working through a lot of the bylaw.
Just it said five days instead of five working days like it did later on. So I just thought it was, may have been a clerical thing. Um, one other question I had was on the parking fine paid to township? Or once it goes to a court based one, then it goes to the province?
It's provincial offenses, which is done through the county.
So no matter what the parking fee, if we register like for snow plowing in the village, that's going to provincial coffers, I take it.
Uh, only if it, if they fail to pay it. So the way that the parking tickets work is if a ticket is issued and it's paid within. Uh, only if it, if they fail to pay it. So the way that the parking tickets work is if a ticket is issued and it's paid within the fifteen days or whatever that they're
Comes to us.
Hard to pay, then it comes to us. If they don't do that, then we have the ability to put it on their um, plate renewal or their sticker renewal or license renewal. Sorry, trying to think about what renewals are actually required now. It goes on their license renewal.
Yeah, so.
So it does go to the province if it's failed to pay to us.
Okay.
Deputy mayor.
Thank you, worship and through you. If I can, I will ask our uh, director of corporate services this question. It was asked of me a few weeks ago by a resident. If a fine was to be registered against a resident and with the intent of putting it on the tax bill, only to find out that that individual has no tax bill, their significant other they're living with does. Does place of residence constitute a good enough reason to put on, on that tax bill?
We can't put things on the tax roll. That's a treasurer question unless it's taxes, water, or.
No, a fine.
Oh, oh, okay.
Through you administrative monetary penalties can go on the tax roll. Um, the challenge with that being, for example, if we um, I'm trying to think of a good example. I, if it's a renter, it would go, it say a renter has an infraction on a property. It's going to go to the owner of the property. So we can issue that ticket to the renter. But if the renter doesn't pay the ticket and we issue a subsequent ticket, it's going to the owner of that property. We have specific provisions in the bylaws to say that we can go to the owner of the property. So the example you've provided where um, somebody doesn't have a pro, an ownership stake in a property in the township, but they've created an infraction. It's no different than a renter. So ultimately, depending on what it is, so if it's a noise infraction, we have provisions in the bylaws that say that it's a responsibility of the property owner to ensure that there's compliance with the bylaws. So um, it would eventually, it would then go against the owner of the property. It's the same as a property standard scenario where a tenant may not be addressing the cleanliness of a property and we have to go into an enforcement scenario. If there's a cleanup, then um, we end up having to do that and it goes on the tax roll for the property. So it would be the owner that's ultimately responsible for those costs.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we're just, the only motion on we're on is the enforcement policy attachment exhibit A or H. Sorry, councillor Lackey. Did you have your hand up? No, this, we're doing them individually. So I need to call the question on this to get to another one. Not that I'm trying to brush this through, but we've got a few to go through here. So go ahead.
So I thank you. Just for clarification, I wanted to note that you read out exhibit H to the report and the enforcement policy is exhibit A.
Sorry, we've made that clerical error again, and we changed it. Madam clerk has, it's exhibit A, not H. My apologies. So committee, the whole recommended council approve by law number twenty twenty five dash zero one one enforcement policy attached as exhibit A attached to report number planning, development twenty twenty five dash zero one eight. All those in favor? All those opposed and we're carried. So we're moving on to the next one. Uh, moved by councillor Kelman, seconded by councillor Gurrell, that the committee, the whole recommend council approve by law number twenty twenty five dash zero one two being a bylaw to appoint a screening and hearing officer attached to report number, report number planning and development twenty twenty five dash zero one eight as exhibit C. Is that the correct one? So, okay, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, all those opposed, and it is carried. Moved by councillor Gurrell, seconded by councillor Kelman, the committee, the whole recommend that council approve by law number twenty twenty five dash zero one three being a bylaw for licensing of dogs and prohibiting the running at large of dogs attached to report number planning and development twenty twenty five dash zero one eight as exhibit D. Questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, all those opposed, it is carried. Next item, councillor Kelman is moving, seconded by councillor Gurrell. Committee, the whole recommend that council approve by law number twenty twenty five dash zero one four being a bylaw to prohibit the throwing, placing or depositing of waste on a private or municipal property attached to report number planning and development twenty twenty five dash zero one eight as exhibit E. Discussion on the motion. I wish I could follow people who throw things out of their cart, but anyways, go ahead, deputy mayor.
Thank you, worship through you. Does a camera constitute guilt if caught on a camera?
I'd go ahead, madam.
Thank you through you. We would definitely follow up on it, um, determining what we could find. We also would go through the garbage. Like it, it, there, there's a lot of considerations in terms of trying to determine that, but um, for example, one of the things that might happen is people disposing of waste at the waste site after hours when it's not open. Um, if that's caught on camera together with potential license plate information or information within those, within the trash that's left behind, that could constitute enough for us to go ahead and proceed with an enforcement action.
Okay, the reason I ask, there are certain segments of the township that are more rural than others. And uh, there are certain segments of roads that are absolutely void of, of anybody within sight. They tend to draw more of the, of the reckless and careless that choose to use it as a window dumping site. And I just wondered if we could use our cameras and thus, you know, perhaps mitigate some of this when they realize that they don't know where these cameras are going to be from time to time.
We have had private property owners use trail cams from time to time, but no, we haven't had a bylaw with an enforcement mechanism.
But who knows?
Well.
Big things are coming.
Well, that's the whole point. I mean, if somebody's on camera and it's identifiable, then I would like to see that type of thing utilized by staff to, just, just to make it worthwhile.
Uh, the C A O has to.
We can make all the bylaws we want, but if we don't put some teeth into it and we have the cameras to put teeth into it.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, worship through you. Uh, yes, we actually do have some trail cameras and we have used them on occasion. Um, particularly with beaver removal problems and people, you know, knocking traps out and all that sort of stuff. So yeah, it's an effective tool. We can certainly use that. It'd be helpful if you could give a list of
Areas.
Areas to the director operations uh, so that we could start doing that.
Excuse me, just, just to answer your statement, any one of our township staff that follow the back roads could identify those very much as easy as I could. Um, the frequency of garbage in those same places would identify them. Thank you.
And just for the record, it doesn't need to be in the back forty. Cliff Road has been a notorious dumping ground because somehow the shortcut to the dump means that it doesn't make it to the dump. I lived on that road for a long time, couldn't understand. Go ahead, councillor Kelman.
Thank you, worship and through you. I was just wondering, is it, is, am I correct that if there is illegal dumping on township property, staff clean it up? But if there's illegal dumping on private property, our staff cannot clean it up?
And director holiday, can you speak to that?
Through your worship, uh, that is correct. After it's been reviewed, who, uh, we work with by law. We review if we can identify where the waste came from, then our staff do pick it up within the right of way, but we don't on private property.
Thank you. And councillor Antoine Hartley.
Through you, your worship, just wondering, it's uh, under inspection seven. It says the bylaw for enforcement officer or other person appointed for the purpose of enforcing this bylaw has the authority to enter upon and examine any yards, vacant lots, grounds or building uh, other than a dwelling. I just want to know what kind of liability we might find ourselves in, in entering a building uh, on somebody's property. Go ahead.
Through you, it's absolutely not our practice to enter into buildings necessarily, but there are some properties that you go on to where a building may be in a poor condition or state um, full of refuse or waste, which is most times a property standards issue, not necessarily a littering issue. Um, but what it means is that the bylaw enforcement officer cannot go into a dwelling, but can look in and around buildings on a property.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions in regards to uh, placing or depositing waste on private or municipal policy? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, all those opposed, and it is carried. Getting down there, folks. Next one is moved by councillor Gurrell, seconded by councillor Kelman, the committee, the whole recommend that council approve by law number twenty twenty five dash zero one five being a bylaw to regulate trailer usage in the township of Leeds and Thousand Islands. Attached report number planning and development twenty twenty five dash zero one eight as exhibit F. Questions? Go ahead, uh, councillor Antoine Hartley and then councillor Lackey. Yes, I'm still in the chair. I haven't fallen, fallen over yet.
Oh, for a period of time until they find their um, their, their way, you know, is there an accommodation for that?
Go ahead, madam planner.
Thank you. So the zoning bylaw only allows for the occupation of a trailer in a campground or trailer park or on a property where there's a building permit for a house for a period of up to two years. Um, the enforcement policy that was brought forward tonight does include policies that say we have the, the municipality has some discretion or the bylaw enforcement officer has some discretion in terms of where the bylaws are enforced and how the bylaws are enforced. Um, there have been oper, or there have been situations where somebody has been on a property, living in a house perhaps that there were some significant property standards issues with and ended up living in a trailer or where we've allowed somebody to continue to live in a trailer even though it's an enforcement scenario. Um, because it was the safer scenario and we weren't prepared to make somebody homeless in that situation. And that's where the discretion of the bylaw enforcement comes into place on a case by case basis. Um, in all cases, that may not be an appropriate way to approach a situation. And so the reason that this bylaw is being brought forward is because we have a number of situations where we have people putting trailers on properties. Um, that are just vacant rural properties or vacant waterfront properties and they're occupying these trailers. Which isn't permitted in the zoning bylaw. And the only way to enforce in that scenario is to go to court, which is costly because an injunction would be required to have that trailer removed. Um, in many of those situations, we have no idea what's happening with the sewage. We have no idea what, where the water is coming from. Occupancy of these trailers over winter months where we have no idea how the heat is being provided. Some of them are being um, made up with homemade furnaces or wood stoves within them, which is an unsafe si- situation. So while I recognize there may be some scenarios where somebody is using a trailer as a temporary means of housing because unfortunately, they don't have a good housing situation. Um, we have to use some discretion in terms of where we enforce in these situations and some of these trailer situations have been going on for some time. Doesn't mean they've been legal. It doesn't mean they've been allowed, but in the absence of this bylaw, we have no enforcement mechanism whatsoever, short of going to court to get an injunction, which I, as I said, it's a very expensive and costly process for us to go through and involves our lawyers. So um, I think that the question you're asking comes back more so to where we can use some discretion, which is now enshrined within the enforcement policy to recognize that we're not always going to go into a scenario heavy-handed and say we're absolutely enforcing here. We have to use that discretion in some cases.
Okay. Any, oh, sorry, councillor Lackey, my apologies.
Um, thank you, worship and through you. Um, I just wondered if the director could elaborate on, on another scenario. Um, so basically I'm, somebody doesn't have a lot of money, but I've come across uh, say fifty-five acres of waterfront that someday I'm going to build on. But for now, I'm going to use it on the weekends. I'm going to take my kids there and go fishing and, and whatever. My trailer is a camper. It's on wheels. It's towable. We've got propane. We've got cooking. So where does that fit in to the grand scheme of things? Are you telling somebody that has bought sports, say it's got a beer or a duck pond on it or whatever it may be. It's a recreational property to which maybe someday they will build, but are they allowed to enjoy it?
Uh, through you on a day-to-day basis, yes, but the trailer is not a permitted use currently under the zoning bylaw.
So the short answer is no. Based on
Yep, the trailer can, cannot be parked and occupied on the property.
Permit in place that they're building a
That's correct. So trailers shouldn't be stored. Open storage isn't a permitted use. The storage of trailers and vehicles on a vacant property is not a permitted use in the zoning bylaw.
So you're telling me if I buy a piece of property, I'm not allowed to use it?
Uh, if council recalls, there was a zoning amendment done recently for such a use on a property to allow it as a temporary use for a period of up to three years to allow them to determine where a house could go and to allow a trailer on a property to accommodate their family while they're there trying to figure out where they want to build a house on the property. And so that was a temporary use zoning amendment that was done.
So there is a three-year window.
Uh, if they come forward with an application.
Uh, so there's a temporary zoning which allowed it to be there for a period of up to three years. Sorry, it's been so long since I've gone through the process with temporary zoning. I think you can extend a temporary zone up to a total of five years. So there's an additional two years that they could come back to council for an extension on. Um, in addition, once that period expires and the temporary use is no longer permitted, then um, but if they were to pull a building permit, they could then live in that trailer for an additional two years. Now, part of that would be um, an agreement with the municipality in terms of the occupancy of the trailer. So we know where their water's coming from. We know that they have adequate sanitary facilities on the property. Um, so we would require that so that we can inspect that and make sure that things are being done properly, but that would be the mechanism to approach that.
I think you'll find some unhappy people about that. It is a trailer which you can tow to K O A and have it pumped out, fill it full of fresh water and away you go. It's not any different than a boat.
Fair, but when you have a boat, you have to take it to a marina to have it pumped out.
That's what I just said. You can take and pull your trailer to K O A.
Right. But go ahead.
I would just add that it's currently not a permitted use. So the trailer bylaw is not permitting to regulate anything that's not currently already not permitted.
Got it. Further questions?
I'm debating. I don't see the relevancy, but I'd really love to say it anyway. Um, I think I will. Um, so we talk about other dwellings and, and campers and things like that. Um, I know for one, and, and you as well, um, you've got a cruiser sitting at the end of your dock at your residence. That's a second dwelling. That's not hooked on to septic hydro. So I, I, I see the difference, but I don't.
Go ahead.
I'm not trying to start a debate because I understand what you're saying, but I, I just want to add that there's people that have a, the properties that you're referencing with your example about the boats are developed with a residential unit. So if somebody has a house on a property and lives on a property and they have company coming for the weekend that want to stay in the trailer on their property, that's one thing. But it's people that are buying a property and putting a trailer on it and just occupying that trailer rather than putting a dwelling on that property. That, that's the issue that's not permitted under the zoning bylaw. So we, I can tell you that we have had a number of complaints about a variety of properties where the scenario has occurred and there is no septic. And these trailers are not being moved and pumped. So um, it's, it's an environmental consideration in terms of a lot of places where these trailers are located and we have no enforcement mechanism. And at the same time, you have a number of other people who have bought properties and developed them with their houses and their cottages and are not pleased with the illegal uses that are happening on the properties adjacent to them unregulated. So um, we, we do receive complaints about them and it's very difficult to, to cease the use once it has started. So that's why we're proposing to bring forward this mechanism.
So the motion still stands. Further comments or questions? Call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? At three, so it carries four to three. Okay, uh, next item is moved by councillor Calman, seconded by councillor Lackey. The committee whole recommends that council approve bylaw number twenty twenty five dash zero one six being a bylaw to admin- administrative monetary penalty bylaw twenty-two dash zero forty-four to add new designated bylaws and update the tables attached to schedule C to the bylaw attached to report number planning and development twenty twenty five dash zero one eight as exhibit G. Any further comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carried. Um, okay. So last item on the agenda before we get to the other unfinished business, other business notices of motion. Uh, seven point six, authority to accept conveyance of a portion of Ganon Oakway Lake Road to township. So the motion comes forward from councillor Lackey, seconded by councillor Calman, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute documentation required to accept the conveyance of the portion of Ganon Oakway Lake Road to the township identified as part thirteen on reference plan twenty-eight R one five nine four five. Discussion on this motion. Yeah, please do. So we'll wait for the planner to put it on the screen and then I'll recognize councillor, maybe any other hands up? Okay. Zoom for the old people? I'm speaking of myself, by the way, because I can't see that. Okay, so I have councillor maybe and then deputy mayor Fody. Go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor and through you. Um, most of you know that I lived on this road for twenty-two years, so I'm well aware of this particular, uh, piece of roadway. It does, uh, bring up a question. It's all, township's always, always managed this piece of, uh, roadway. So it, I, I find it a little bit comical, I'll say, that it's coming to us that it was never cleaned up or put as part of our, our road officially as much as it's always been because the plows, buses have always gone past this, through this to the very end to pick up children. And with the, uh, Griffins Lakeside Lodge and Tedford's at the end, there's a lot of traffic there too. So it is a, a very busy road in the summertime, um, and, uh, it's a very small, just across the field. Yeah. Why the road was actually put there in its first place is again, similar to what councillor Fody had mentioned on the one of the same bay is because of a granite rock that is, uh, very large and not wanting to go through it. So, uh, yeah, I definitely don't have any problem with this one.
Deputy Mayor Fody.
Thank you worship and through you. Can we get some absolute clarity as to where this is located? The confusing part with me, Ganon Aqui Lake Road is at the end of, as for Brian, or sorry councillor maybe had made reference to near Tedford's cottages, I call it.
Ganon Aqui Lake Lane is the one off of Ga- and off of Dariel Road.
Okay, because this states Black Rapids Road and to me.
That was an error. Remember, we, we stated at the beginning of the meeting that it was an error.
Uh, that is the error there?
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, so it is at the end of, uh,
Aqui Lake Road.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Further comments or questions? See no hands up? All those in favor? All those opposed? And we're carried. Unfinished business? There is none. Other business, there is none. And notices of motion. So notices of motion, Mr. Lackey.
Uh, through you worship, uh, I think there was some clarity looked for um, at our delegation. So I'd like to bring forward, uh, discussion on the waiving of the fees.
So they, so it's discussion in regards to the policy. So, um, the correct, which policy is it? It's three separate policies. It'll be all three of them. So the, the staff will bring forward the correct wording so that we can at least have a conversation to potentially consolidate make it more clear. Any other notices of motion? Any other notices of motion? Pardon? So, yeah, I had went through it. So, um, if you wanna use your microphone.
Thank you, madam mayor through you. Uh, one thing that was concerning in my own area, noticed by my neighbors is, looks like a drone's been flying over the property in that area for, uh, probably a couple of months, trying to track where it's coming from or what it is, but it seems to be moving quite a bit from Ganon Aqui area, going west, back along. Don't know whether it's the railroad doing some surveying or the highway doing survey or something. But it does have, uh, the flashing red, green lights on it. It does come down. It moves east, west, north, south, different times. But it does seem to be doing a lot of traveling around the area, but I don't know whether there's anybody who actually knows if there's something going on or whether there's some avenue to find out perhaps what's, what it might be.
Unless Director Holiday has any indication, I would say that, uh, of any of the work that CN or the MTO or whoever is doing. Um, I would say that you would have to phone the, uh, police.
But it is nighttime stuff too. So that's why it come, comes a little bit.
Be, it would be a call to O P P, I would think.
Okay.
Any for, go ahead, deputy mayor.
Um, thank you worship through you. Just to further councillor maybe's comments, uh, there was some notices, not notice of motion, notices of, uh, sophisticated look at a drone on San Bay Road about a week or ten days ago. I did see a glimpse of it. I thought I was seeing something one day and I stopped and walked back to a window. And I didn't see it. It's, it's not your cheap little drone. I don't know who's flying this around.
It might be M and R as well.
I had one neighbor said if he sees it again, it's gonna be down. Uh, which, uh, he said, if you're taking unsolicited pictures of my property without my consent, you're fair game.
I would say you'd call the police first before you do that.
Well, by the time the police
Comment on that as well. Drones are regulated by Transport Canada, so you should probably chat with them before you make any
Open fire?
Yeah.
It's, but I can understand where people come from when they're deemed to be, being spied on without their consent. This is a pretty, I don't know the price of drones. This would not be your bottom starting level drone. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
So maybe nothing to do with it, but there is definitely a heightened law enforcement presence down along the parkway. And, um, I don't know if this is a tool that they are using as well, but it seems a long way from the border to be up your, your way, Terry. But, uh, stranger things, right?
If, if I may, to your point through your worship, maybe that would be the deterrent to the neighbors. You may be shooting down a law enforcement drone. You may wanna consider that.
Any other, go ahead. Any other, other business?
Uh, through you worship, uh, councillor Calman and I currently sit on the recreation, uh, committee. Um, we had a meeting last Thursday, Wednesday. Um, anyway, we have committed to two town hall meetings, uh, per ward uh, with regards to feedback for recreation. I believe, um, Director Holiday is gonna bring um, some more information next week with regards to dates and locations. Um, but anyway, the public will have a chance to, um, sit in and we will listen.
Perfect. Okay, any other, other business? Sorry, I didn't mean to skip over that. Um, we've got our notices of motion, so I'll go with the mayor's update. Um, rodeo tickets I believe are on sale for the Lance Down Fair Rodeo that is happening the weekend of May twenty second. Uh, I would highly encourage you, if you are planning on attending, to get your tickets well in advance. They did sell out last year. Um, the other thing is the, uh, the barn, uh, where the band and the bar is, is going to be age of majority only. So no underage children in that barn, whereas it was an all age event last year. But now it's, uh, it's just, uh, age of majority. Um, but lastly, I would like to thank, um, all of our staff who worked very diligently a week ago uh, during our ice storm twenty twenty-five. I know there were a number of individuals up in the northern end and in the eastern end who were without power for a lengthy period of time. Um, I was only out for one full day, um, but, uh, I know there's many people who are out for multiple days for long periods of time. However, um, myself and the director, uh, Director Holiday traveled on the train up to O G R A uh, for the conference and, uh, funny enough, it would have been faster on the four oh one, strangely enough. Um, because of the challenges with signals, because power had been out and all that sort of thing. So just need to give a huge shout out to Public Works people who had, um, I don't remember the total number of calls they got. Um, but there was an enormous amount of trees down, uh, across roadways and what have you. So there was lots of work to be done there. But lastly, but mo- definitely not most least, um, is our fire department. So I believe, uh, I'll leave it to the chief to explain how many calls they had and what they did in those, that seventy-two hour plus range, but, uh, they ran their butt, butt off. So chief, go ahead.
Yes, and thank you through your worship. Uh, we did end up with thirty-five car up calls, uh, over the weekend, just storm related. Uh, thirty-two, thirty-two calls in twenty-four hours, which is significant, we'll say. Um, we had multiple times during the time that that was going on that, uh, Brockville was paging us out for one call and we wouldn't even get to that call before we were being called to two and three more. So, um, a huge shout out to the officers that were in charge of the trucks and and manipulating where they wanted their trucks and who they wanted where. Uh, most of our calls, twenty-six of those calls were wires down or lines and trees on fire. Um, unfortunately, we can't put them out until the, either the power goes out or until Ontario Hydro gets there. So we did have a few instances where we had to wait a number of hours for somebody to come and we just couldn't leave the site. Uh, but Hydro was awesome to get there as quickly as they did in most cases. Um, so once again, huge shout out. We did have all four stations staffed, um, for pretty well the entire day on Sunday. Um, at the same time, we were still running a course at the training center and we were trying to run another course, but we had to cancel just due to conditions that day. Um, and they got caught up this weekend. So, uh, huge shout out to the team at Leeds Fire. They did a great job of making sure everybody was covered and, uh, we even had instances where we're just moving trucks from station four to station one to cover down here and, cause they were getting bombarded at one point down here. So we moved trucks south and they had four more calls before they even got down to this. And so, um, I had a couple of officers that tried to come from station four to station three at one point and it took them four hours because they kept getting called to a different call all the way down highway thirty-two. So I, I was almost two hours getting home with a truck as well, just trying to get one truck moved back to a station. Bumped all over, but definitely a busy weekend.
Very busy weekend and thank you to all the wellness checks that were also done in amongst all of that. I know it was an extra layer of complexity, but, uh, um, I would just remind the public that are listening that in times of these sort of larger scale in weather instances, often we don't know who our neighbors are anymore and we're fairly fortunate in this area that people generally do. However, there's been a lot of change in, in people who've moved to our community and, and in light of, uh, an aging population as well. Really check on your neighbors and make sure that they're okay. They have water, they have batteries, they have whatever they may need. Um, because, um, no one wants to see anybody go without. And I know that even after one day, my, the temperature without heat for a whole day was down to fifty-four degrees in the house. And, you know, I was out from nine thirty in the morning till nine forty-five at night, which was really actually only twelve hours now that I think about it. But, but the point being is that you can lose heat pretty quickly and luckily it warmed up the next day. However, um, it's really incumbent upon all of us to take care of our neighbors and do the right thing. So just a reminder. Go ahead councillor or deputy mayor Fody.
Thank you worship. Just to add to that, besides the workload that our fire department and works department had, there was a number of good Samaritans in the township actually using chainsaws and clearing roads without even being asked. I, I saw it early that morning when I went up a tree road, which I happen to live on and came across a husband and wife team with a large chainsaw who had literally cut up a very large tree just in lieu of the fact the fire department might need to get on to houses further on down. So I mean, those that are able and have the tools and wherewithal to do so, it's great. Uh, at that very same time, not the length of this room away was hydro wires that were brought within almost reaching distance of the road. So with that, with that, uh, you know, desire to help the township comes a risk. And, uh, I can only imagine the risk our fire department was in receiving calls at two, three, four in the morning down wires and you can't even see where they are. So, you know, I, I guess the, the big takeaway is that everybody's well trained. Nobody that I'm aware of got hurt or in this case killed. Um, much worse scenario is we all know up through Lindsay Peterborough on and to, uh, there's still hundreds of places up there without power. So hats off to all those that kept us out of the dark any longer than we already were. Thank you.
Any further comments or any other events that you'd like to indicate? I have no hands up. So I will go to the motion to adjourn, moved by councillor Calman, seconded by councillor Lackey. The committee whole adjourn at eight thirty-six P M. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it is carried. Thank you, everyone.